Meeting called to order. Mr. Rosales, could you please lead us in the pleasure of the agenda?
Please rise. Ready, begin.
The pleasure of the agenda is to allow United States of America to report coverage for potential sets, one nation, and individual, putting their duties just as well.
We're going to do roll call, but are we going to use the sworn in of a new commissioner first?
Do we go with the sworn in first? What do we do?
Let's hear the agenda, last one.
Be careful what you wish for, Mr. [inaudible].
Congratulations. Let's see. Any public comments on items not on the agenda at this moment, we could hear of? No public comments on items not on the agenda? All right. Consent items. Regular planning commission minutes for August 10th.
Did you do a motion for approval?
So moved. So moved. Well, there's just a...
Just one?
Yeah, there's a item three and four about, right?
No, item three, well, yes, they are, but that's public hearing. This is just, there's only one item under consent. So I second that move.
All the motion?
Aye.
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 Would you pass? Okay, so that's all the minutes, correct?
Yes, that's the minutes.
Public hearing items. Item number three, tentative parcel map number 058-834-083. We have a presentation on item number three.
This parcel map has come before you once before, and we just wanted to go through this process cleanly, just in case there were any challenges. So again, it's a subdivision, minor subdivision of 1.58 acres on the southwest corner of Rancho Frontera Avenue and Cold Road. Creating parcels A and B, and each one would be approximately eight tenths of an acre, or 34,848 square feet in size. You know it well as the lot that used to have a retention basin there. And I think there was some discussion as to what happened, why the retention basin was removed, and what are we doing with the water. And I think we've already discussed that in some detail. So I'm here to answer any questions related to this, or just go through your motion.
Any questions?
Yes.
First, should we open this to the public hearing?
Oh, yes, that's right.
Okay, at this moment when I open the public hearing. Anybody wanting to speak in favor of this project? Or against this project? No? Okay. Commissioners? Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Serbin. The first one is, obviously, this is a project that was placed before the planning commission and costs were incurred. The question would be is that if all costs have been addressed, and if they're if they're taking care of all the obligations to the city as far as...
The cost, yes, the costs so far to file the application have been paid upfront. We don't take, we don't take it to this point, or even beyond this point, another point, unless they pay their fees. They have to file an application, they pay the fees, and then we proceed with making staff meetings, recommendations, and such.
Yeah, there's, there was a second question regarding the, okay. Oh, that's right, I switched them around myself.
Number three wasn't switched, four and five.
I'll have to stop because I mixed up my notes.
Four and five are reversed in the packet.
Right.
But not three, three's okay.
Okay, so the tentative parcel matter that the planning commission is considering right now, if they don't do anything with the project in two years, it'll come back to the planning commission?
Yes, for extension.
You do have it that the applicant shall pay all applicable fees, and not say, it doesn't say he has paid all applicable fees.
Well, up to now, up for this point, they have. The other fees you're probably thinking about is the mapping, the engineering, encroachments, let's see, building permit fees and such, which are not applicable at this time.
Okay, it asks number four, prior to recordation of final map, any improvements, et cetera, et cetera. So this is a process prior to the final map?
That is correct.
And the final map will come afterwards?
Final parcel map, yes.
I have no more questions.
Any other questions, Commissioner? No questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, where you move for? To approve the tentative parcel map?
Yes.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So do we do item number four or number five first, since they're reversed? Does it matter, does it matter? Okay, let's do item number four, which is uniform, oh, should we close the public hearing on this?
Technically, the public hearing should have been closed before it came back to the council for discussion, so I assume it was.
All right. Item number four, uniform application number 2015-06, conditional use permit, Carlos Chao. We have a presentation from Mr. Serbin and Rob Morales.
And this one, Chairman and Commissioners. Staff has reviewed the proposed conditional use permit, or CUP, application, to allow the operation of a existing public collection center to resume for the purpose of recycling aluminum cans, glass, at 601 South Imperial Avenue. If developed in accordance with the city standards that's outlined in the attached resolution, the project would encourage recycling for California favorite container and leader reduction act. The options available to the commission would be one of the following. It would be a motion to approve the resolution, number, well, approve the resolution as submitted with the adoption of the appropriate findings. Number two would be motion to deny the resolution as submitted with the adoption of the required finding conditions. And number three would be motion to approve resolution as submitted and modify certain conditions for the adoption of the required finding and conditions. And then there's a fourth one that was put in there, and that would be a motion to continue the public hearing for further study. At this time, it is recommended that the planning commission open the public hearing and allow input from all proponents and opponents of the proposed project. It is recommended that the proposed conditional use permit be considered an action taken on either of the following. It would be a motion to adopt the applicable findings and conditions under public commission, approving the CUP. Or number two, motion to adopt the applicable finding and conditions under planning commission, denying the conditional use permit. So we're asking that the public hearing be open at this time.
Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and open this to the public. Anybody in favor of this project? Speak now. Anybody opposing this project, speak now. Please, go ahead.
Good evening, distinguished members of the city council and people here. We work at Calpak Recycling.
Could you just take your name?
Oh, sorry, Gregory Cortez, I'm general manager at Calpak Recycling. And we're within 100 feet of the location, we're located on 603 Emerson. We've been doing business almost two years now at that address. This location is located, like I said, within 50 to 100 feet of our location. And right now, currently in Collexico, this would be the fourth location open within a mile radius. We have currently employees that we've been hiring. If this location were to open, we would have to let some go because of, and now the pie gets spread out in a thinner spot. We see this, currently, the three locations that are currently open service not just CRV materials, but service paper, cardboard, metals, and all the other ones. This location would only service the CRV. So being the base of all the recycling, this would take away from all of us within, as soon as it was, if it were to be passed.
Thank you. So you're speaking against?
Against, yes.
Anybody else who wish to speak in favor or against? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, speak, please. State your name.
Good afternoon, my name is Carlos Chao. I'm a long-time resident of Collexico. I've been recycling this been in the valley for over 25 years, and I've been in that location for over 10 years. And I think it's a good idea to have it there. So I mean, I just, I, how can I say it? I've been, I've been doing this for a long time. I've had over 26, 27 years of experience, and I would really like to have that place there again. It was shut down for six, seven months, and I would like to reopen it again. I have a lot of customers that have been looking for me to come back, and that's why I'm reopening the center. Thank you.
May I ask, why'd you shut it down, or what's the reason why?
Ivy Recycling was leased out to SA Recycling, but I worked for Ivy Recycling for 25 years. What happened is SA Recycling closed down their operations after three years. So it's been, that center's been closed for six months. So I would really like to open it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor or opposing? No? All right, so let's go ahead and close the public hearing. It is 6:44. Commissioners, any questions? Go ahead.
Excuse me, if I couldn't make a comment, I was... Just to give you a little history of the area where the applicant is asking to utilize for recycling, that used to be a recycling center before. If you've taken a drive out there, there's a structure there, there's a block wall that they used to utilize the, that area for, to take in recyclables. It did go through a CUP at that time as well, it went through a public hearing. It was approved with conditions, they had to do certain things in order to do the improvements, and also to, to make it more attractive as far as to hide the, what they were doing there, and because of the traffic on Imperial Avenue. So as far as the usage, as an existing usage that, you could almost say that's ongoing. They're not doing anything different. They're just coming back, and they're asking to reopen that area for the same purposes it was approved at one time.
Okay. Well, there is no issue with environment, there's no issue with traffic. This is a business that was open already, and so there is no, there shouldn't be any financial impact. But if there is, I think we are encouraged by the state of California for recycling. And for us to judge or to say that we cannot, we allow only certain, certain number of businesses, that's not going to be fair. I think we need to be fair, and we need to be business people, and we need to allow opportunity, just like you had an opportunity. Can you imagine if he stood before us and said, "I don't want you to open," how would you feel? I mean, so let's be fair, let's, this is an open market, the competition is good, makes every so... Competition is good for the reason that your business probably is going to get better, and you're going to try to have a better price or a better service. You're going to improve, and he's going to improve. I'm 100% supportive of this.
Commissioners, is there a comment?
Yes. Well, while I do support the idea of bringing in more business, at this time, I need for you to explain to us why this is even under consideration of the planning commission? Is it because of the bathrooms? What's the issue here?
No, because, because of the issue, and it requires a CUP. So because it's, CUP is being required, then it's being brought before the planning commission.
And the CUP is because of why? Because what I did, one of the things I picked up is the issue of the bathrooms. What else is there?
Yes, was upon a time that, that was an issue that our department had brought up because there was no restroom facilities on site within the compound of the recycling area. But in looking into the building code, it does indicate that as long as there's a restroom within 500 feet of a certain facility, then, then that facility does not have to have a restroom for the employees. And as long as the owner of that next facility gives permission for the other employees to go in and utilize it, then it's okay. In this case, the owner of the supermarket, being the owner of that property, then he gave permission to the tenant at that time, as well as now, to utilize their restroom because of the business connection that they have together.
Okay, this locate, Mr. Chao's location is right on the parking lot.
It's right on the parking lot, yes.
And the other gentleman's location?
Right across the way, you know where Jack and Moss is at. Jack and Moss is California Market, we're pretty much kitty corner from, I could literally see him from where we're at.
They have, they do have a building.
We have a establishment.
It's a metal building that they have.
All the arrangements that you guys, the facility provided for the image to provide, to look at, to improve the image of Collexico to the public. And we had, I see that location was there, was pulled in within the wall. But for the image, you guys are more than willing to pass by to our establishment and see, actually, have fans, with the guests that have been very happy with us. So of competition, they came to us from U of M, or SA at that time, came to us and been very happy with our service, with our rates, with our, the way we greet them, take care of them, and more than willing to come back to us.
Isn't that a unusual situation to have a facility? If you go down to Andrade and 98, or Birch, where the, I think it's the Soul Market is at, right there on the side, they do have a facility that's in the open. It's true that the owner of this business, where this gentleman, I think your employee there, or where he works at, then they do have a nice facility, it is, and they were required to go through certain requirements. But because of the building that they wanted to utilize, there was requirements that they had to meet in order to utilize that building. As far as the competition and the recycling, the competition, excuse me, is very, is very heavy. There's one there, there's another one on the, on the corner, I think Grant and Pierce, I think it's still there. And then you have another one still on Caesar Chavez and Heber that you have. I'm not sure whether there's any other one, but you do have them all on. And again, it comes down to competition, it comes down, like this gentleman says, they give very good service to their, to their customers that come in. That's what makes a business, you give good service, then you got, you get people coming back and, and bring in their business to them. So if their service is good, then they don't have much to worry about.
Well, yeah, as far as the service, that's their concern, and that's their business, to whatever level they wish to extend it. But what are the, what, I, here's one business that doesn't have to have certain services established for their personnel, while the other one did.
That's only because they, they wanted to have a building where they were going to have their recyclables and all that. So because of that, then the building had to be conditioned to the requirement so that what they had there, they were going to do. And I think their business is bigger in the sense that they take in more, or different recyclables. I would think that would be it. But I don't think there's anything in the municipal code that says that you've got to have a building. If one wants to have an open area where to sell or buy the recyclables, they can go ahead and do that. If you're a business that want to have an enclosed area, well, there's requirements that you have to have so that that closed area can be conditioned for that type of business, and also so for the safety and welfare of the customers that go into the, inside that building.
Well, if the code permits it, it permits it, I just don't quite altogether get it.
Why would you allow this business to use some of those restroom, and not another business to use some of those restroom?
Because the building code allows that, like I said before, the building code says that if there's a facility within a certain length of feet, and I think that's somewhere between 300 to 500 length of feet, then then that business can, or, yeah, that business can conduct their business without having to have a restroom in that area. It would be just like the malls. You go to the mall, and not every, every store has a restroom. There's restroom within that 300 to 500 length of feet, and that takes care of the, of the needs that are required for that.
And they got this permission because it's the same landlord.
And the landlord, the owner of the property gave them permission to utilize their facilities.
And they would, their hours of operation would have to be no earlier and no later than...
I think we're going from...
Yeah, the store opens, I don't know what time, and closes, I don't know what time. Obviously, your operation, because of the bathroom, could not open earlier and could not open later. That's why the city needs to make sure.
And that could be one of the conditions that could be put in there, that their business cannot open prior to the business of the store opening.
I have a question. Rob, are you removing any existing parking spaces from the supermarket?
There'd be a couple of parking spaces that are removed, but that's not going to have an impact on, on the parking. There's more than sufficient parking for that grocery store. That was taken into consideration even at the last time that the other business came in to utilize it for recyclable.
How many spaces are you considering removing?
A million dollar question. I don't know. I don't have that in here.
That was not noted down on the application when Mr. Chao submitted it?
Yeah, there's a map in there. Commissioner Felix, there's a map there, and it indicates how many spaces.
Is it the three right here?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's three spaces being removed from the existing parking?
That they were end up losing.
And there is no impact to the existing business on that? Also, what about the proposed block wall that he wants to build? Is it within the...
There is a block wall ready.
There is one?
Yeah, the block wall is pre-existing.
He's saying in the future, he's going to build another one, or on the south wall?
He's requesting in the future to shade over that wall. I don't, I don't recall you bringing up anything about extending the walls or anything. A shade? Yeah, and that would be it.
That's on which side of the wall, or?
You say it's got a block wall all the way around it, but it doesn't have a roof covering on it? And that's what they want to do, is put a roof covering or shade over, over that area where they're going to be working, so they can have some shade in there.
And that is not going to have any light sight to the vehicles exiting and entering the parking at all?
No.
Has that been taken into consideration? Just don't want, same problem, oh, and by the way, the recycling center in Soul Market on 98 is closed already. It's no longer there.
Oh, it's closed?
Right now, that, that...
The one over here on 98?
The one that you mentioned on Birch.
It's closed, it's gone.
Since I don't go to the recycling, my wife does all that.
I live in that area, so it's no, it's not there no more. So there is no, so there is no conflict with the wall or in the proposed shade that he wants to build in the future? Okay.
Any more comment?
I will, you know, unfortunately, it's not for us to, it's not the planning commission's portion to dictate what can or cannot open. Especially, the code permits it, does not restrict it. So at the very least, I would motion for its approval with the condition that it doesn't operate outside the hours of the store.
Yeah, I second that motion. I second that motion.
All is in favor?
Wait, I'm sorry, I think the motion needs to be a little clearer, so what?
Motion to approve.
What is the limitation of the hours limitation? Do we know what specific hours are?
Since the conditional use permit includes the access to the bathrooms of the supermarket that's on the premises, that it not operate, that it operate within the hours of operation of the store itself.
Whose restroom it's using?
Whose restroom they're using.
Yeah.
That's on the same premises. The same owner.
Second one, Mr. Rosales. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Business items. Alley vacation and abandonment. We have a presentation on this?
Mark?
Sure. Yeah, this is another item for which the planning commission needs to evaluate whether or not a planned action of the city council is consistent with the city's general plan. In this instance, the city council is going to be contemplating at its next council meeting the vacation of an alleyway that is identified in the staff report. And there is a discussion in the staff report, particularly in the discussion and analysis section, where staff states that this abandonment and the, the effect on the surrounding residential areas will be consistent with the city's general plan. And so staff's recommendation is for planning, the planning commission to adopt the resolution finding that the proposed vacation of the alleyway is consistent with the general plan.
I got a question. I think some commissioners asked for certain things the last time, like a natural drawing of how the fence is going to look. I think the public was asking that too. They were asking how high, how it's going to look, where the entrance is going to be, and I think, I think, I think I might have asked that, I'm not sure. And I see the same, same package here. That was a question that was asked many times by, by the existing neighbors. And there was no definite answer. And there was no definite answer.
This, this is a fence that's going to be put in after the alley is vacated?
Well, yeah, because I think there needs to be access from the utility companies.
Part of the, part of the problem is that, that, excuse me, the alley, once it's abandoned, the easement will have to stay there. Therefore, no structures, including block walls, will, will be allowed to block off those entrances to those utilities. So if, what they can do, however, they could put something like a chain link gate so it's accessible and readily available by the gas company, the power company, IID, and the city forces, of course. The city is considering possibly abandoning that water line there and redirecting the water to the residents that are being served through Paulin Street. So that would be about the only change. So in effect, the 20-foot section there of the alley to be abandoned would be a, a zone that's going to be landscaped. We can't have any walls, only on the property boundaries.
Thank you.
Technically, what happens with the alleyway after it is vacated is not part of this plan. There's no specifics that are being considered at this point. Right now, it's just whether the actual, the only issue before the planning commission is whether the actual abandonment of the alleyway itself, the vacation of the alleyway, is consistent with the general plan.
I just want to make sure that we answer all the questions that the citizens had last time. I don't know if we did or not.
Right, there was a concern by the adjacent property owner.
Right.
There's nothing here that it was resolved.
Is the?
No, they're not here. Are you there?
I'm not.
Who's the homeowner of the land?
The north, the south.
The south, yes. I don't remember.
You have a question, señor?
When the occupation is in the middle of the house. I'm the only one that's in the house. She comes from the north of the town. She lives in the east of the town. She lives in the west of the town. And she was a car owner. She's got a guy. Then she went back and moved. She didn't have any signals there, you know, that's the division. She made it in 29 feet. She had to go a little bit further to look. And she was not able to look. And they already marked it with an orange sign.
She was saying she doesn't have an alley, why did they accept her?
Yeah. Don't ask the guy to get out.
In your letter, there's a letter that you have attached to the backup here from the gas company, that they still want to maintain access?
Yes. The easements do not go away.
Yeah, Monday?
The easements do not go away.
I'm sorry? The easement's what?
The easement does not go away.
Okay.
The, the alley is abandoned, the easement's safe.
All right, then, was this ever considered in the past, why the alley was not per se abandoned before, at this time? Why, why didn't the city take care of it before?
I'm sorry, take care of what?
Well, it, it's a, it's a situation where the city is involved for every reason, for the abandonment of the alley. Yes?
Yes.
Why wasn't it done before?
Why wasn't it abandoned before? Nobody, nobody came up with the idea to abandon it. I think the, the owner of the apartments wanted to have more area for parking and such, landscaping. The neighbor's concern was that the alley, once it's abandoned, that a wall be going down the middle of the alley where both properties meet and that it would, she was concerned about the wall that would be put there. So there was discussion of a masonry block wall. As it stands, there can't be a wall there, period.
Mr. Sabin, do we have a sketch or blueprint how this project is going to look afterwards? Let's say, let's assume we, we give, we give away this alley. I want to see if it's a, it's green area, it's parking, it's barrels of, what, what is going to be there on that property, how it's going to look in afterwards and maintain so we, we know that, you know, she doesn't have a problem later on. We know that IID doesn't have a problem with access.
Right.
What is going to be there? We don't even know if there's going to be a fence, a brick wall, barrels, what, what is going to be there? Why can't we have a picture saying this is how it's going to look and make them commit to that, you know, whatever is agreeable?
If I may piggyback on your comments, Mr. Ruson.
We're going to give away the alley.
Yeah, but I, I believe this was addressed, the last time it was brought up.
Yes, it was.
To bring in some kind of a visual.
Yes, it was, and I think the applicant mentioned that they were going to bring something, but nothing's here.
I just want to.
But again, again, I think the concern was that there was going to be a fence down the middle. They can't do that.
Well, the other thing about having the fence right down the middle is that the only one that was going to be part of any damage to the property because of trucks or whatever have an easement would have been her property, not the other property.
I mean, there's something going on there right now. They're being building something. We don't even have the blueprint of what's going on right now. What is going on right now?
I think if I'm not mistaken, that they're improving the, the alley apron. That's about it.
No, there is some construction going on in, behind the units. There's like 12 units going on construction.
Oh, well, the new building.
The new building.
That was approved, yeah.
What's going to be, you know, from the new building to the alley? What is, is that a grass, is that parking?
Parking, there is a site plan that was submitted for part of that approval.
Okay, so let's say, you know, we have in the city ordinance of how much you can build within your property. Let's say if you have an acre of land, you can build 20% of structure and 80% is parking. I'm just giving, putting numbers.
Sure.
I'm not sure if that's the correct numbers. If we were not to give them the alley, are they still allowed and permitted to build those additional units and they have the space within the law, within the city guidelines? That's, that's my question.
The quick answer is yes, and it was considered without the alley abandonment. The alley abandonment came as part of the process. During the process, they said, oh, can we do this? And so then they filed.
So they don't really need it. I mean, for the project.
They don't need it, they wanted it, it would be an asset.
It's an extra, the bonus.
Well, the question is then, if they don't need it, who are we going through this?
I don't know, I can't think, for them.
One of the things that we, that would happen would, would be that the city would require for the owner to put more green area within the compound of the apartment complex. And that would be a benefit for the tenant that live there. That would be the benefit that we kind of look at. Other than that, then the green area would be restricted. It's still, it's still a doable project and all that, but by extending that, another about 10 feet, and that would give about 10 feet of, of green area or at least a little more. So i- is there a benefit? Yes, the benefit is that. Other than that, if, if.
I don't think, you know.
If it's, if it's the decision or, or, or the recommendation of the planning commission not to abandon, then the project is still doable. I mean, it's been approved, like, like Mr. Sabin brought out, it's been approved the way it is without abandoning the alley. As far as the type of fencing that they're going to put, well, the, the city would abandon the, the alley and it would be up to the, to the new owners to, as to what type of fences they want to put up. And it's true, then, you know, the, the, the one that has more interest in it, which would be the owner of the apartment, then he could come up with a, with a plan.
Let me add a little bit more to the conversation here. I think at the time that the alley abandonment became a thought to propose, I believe the tenant, or excuse me, the owner at the time, applicant at the time, thought that he could acquire the entire alley and therefore, where the lady has her fence, that he would put a fence in its place, right at that spot. Of course, things weren't not quite so. Even if we didn't have any utilities in there, which we do, the alley would go, half of it would go to her and the other half would go to the applicant. So the applicant, if he wanted to put the fence on the common property line, then he would have to talk to her and can you sell me your piece or quit claiming your piece, whatever the case is, to get that swap property. Things have changed since because we found three utilities. The city didn't think that we had a water line there, but of course, that changed, that became clear that we did. We didn't know that there was a gas line there. We found that and it's right down the middle. We knew that there was a IID utility there and again, all utilities, including the city, want to maintain their easement rights and they are. So right now, planning commission can consider this to either approve, disapprove, or ask for more information. If you want to ask the applicant to submit some other plans in light of the findings, the findings of that we have three utilities in there, then so be it.
So, you know, basically, the question is that right now, we are here to approve, you know, giving, giving away an alley, which is important. It's a property of the city, it's an access to all the utility companies, all these time that have been spent, attorneys, city staff, us, just for improving a bit of a green area. How much of a bit of a green area? I haven't even seen a picture of it. And that's what bothers me.
Well, again, the applicant is not here. We expect that he would bring something in and we don't have one.
La compañía de ahí de los apartamentos ya dañaron la entrada al callejón, la quebraron, la despedazaron. Fueron y los pararon porque todavía no estaba legal y ellos dijeron que estaba legal. Okay. Yo quiero mi, la entrada como estaba porque si yo voy a tener la mitad de callejón, mis hijos y mis nietos pueden llegar con toda confianza y estacionar sus carros ahí y no andar buscando dónde estacionarse porque ellos regularmente vienen desde el viernes hasta el domingo. A mi carro ya le robaron la batería después de tantos años que estaba ahí en el pickup. Ya se la robaron nomás llegaron los trabajadores de ahí. Okay. Ya tengo una cadena con un candado este pelo ahí en el volante, pero estoy sola. Ustedes ya se acuerdan que yo gasté 200 dólares en arreglar mi cerco, que nadie me lo arregló. Yo estoy recientemente viuda y revivo con mi cheque del seguro social. Yo también soy senior. Allí va a haber más de 20 unidades. Es un buen negocio, claro, pero what about me? Yo también tengo mis derechos, pago impuestos, soy una buena ciudadana y una buena vecina. Lo pueden preguntar. Así es de que yo quiero mi entrada de la calle como estaba, no así quebrada, porque la despedazaron. Ahora lo del gas, no sé la compañía que va a ser. Lo del agua, tampoco. Sencillamente, si van a poner la barra y hay un problema, ¿cómo van a hacer una excavación si va a estar una barra de seis pies ahí?
Ahorita comentaron que no van a poner barra donde están las.
Porque querían poner una jardinera, está bien. Se necesita, ¿verdad? Por supuesto. Una jardinera pegada a la barra y el estacionamiento y luces que a mí me ayudarían mucho tener alumbrado ahí. Pero según me dijo el señor Solís, van a escarbar como dos pies, pero no sé si para la jardinera o para la barra, pero dijo como dos pies. Un, dos pies para una barra de seis pies, no es seguridad. Será de malla, tal vez. No sé, pero me imagino que todavía no tienen los planos. La otra vez que venimos, dijeron que los iban a entregar.
Señora, usted todavía usa el callejón para entrar a su casa, su propiedad?
Pues cuando hay carros ahí, porque yo ya empezó la escuela, en el callejón se llena de carros.
Sí.
Mi medidor del agua está quebrado porque allí pasan todos o ahí se quedan.
Eso sí usa el callejón usted?
Mhm.
Regularmente?
Sí.
Con la escuela.
Twenty-nine. Twenty-nine. Y lo marqué con pintura blanca porque está una marca cuadro. Dijeron la casa, tomaron la medida del condado y mandaron la medida exacta, twenty-nine feet. So I say, it's so, so easy to get from twenty-nine to thirty-nine and that's it. That's it, no problem with me. I don't want any more, but I don't want less, of course. That's it. But I want to respect my rights. I want to take me in consideration due to my income. My children are going to come the la- next week. They're going to try, they're going to let her work over there and the family has to come here and give me a hand, whatever problems is going to come. But it's your decision. So it will, good for them or good for me, that's fine. I'm not.
Look, look, yeah, what we're looking for is obviously what's good for both, all right? To find that, yeah, that fine line.
Thank you.
Nick, see, that's, Nick, how did you guys have these findings that there were these utility services there? You say you, you did believe they weren't there before and now you discover that they are.
Well, part of the line that, part of the line, the water line that goes through the alley at one time went across the school yard. That portion was abandoned and staff thought that the portion through the alley was abandoned as well. We found out that that wasn't true. So initially, I got some bad information, partially correct information, partially wrong. We didn't know about the gas line. That was when I put out a notice to the public and utilities, that's when that letter came out from both IID and the gas company. And of course, we already knew what the situation was with the water line.
The city didn't subcontract anybody to find this out? You guys figured it out on your own?
Yes.
What's that?
Nor the applicant for the project.
I think we should probably reevaluate when the project is completed. We can revisit this when the project is completed. I want to see how the project is done without the IID.
Yeah, we asked for, we asked for a visual, we didn't get.
Yes, yes.
Maybe we'd even ask for something that we can come up with to make it look nicer because of the project, because of her concern and things. You know, we, we can make the, the alley look nicer and improve the.
Right. I agree. I agree because since, since our last meeting and what we discovered now as far as utilities, it actually makes the, the improvements a little more difficult because where are you going to put the fence? What kind of fence? Right now, the only, the only solution to this, to put a fence, at least for the apartment, would be to put a masonry fence along their property line as it currently sits, not in the alley at all. So that is the only viable option. So the alley abandonment then would be a moot point.
So the, the owner of the alley right now, it belongs to the city?
Yes.
So we will be giving that.
Nick, I think that the applicant should submit the visuals and the paperwork we need to probably understand.
Yes, I agree. I agree.
We already asked for it last time.
So we can table it and we'll give instructions.
Or continue it.
Continue it, although, can I provide a little clarification on this before we, before the council, or excuse me, the commission takes action? I, I just want to clarify that the last time this item came before the commission, I think staff was under the impression that the planning commission had to consider and make a decision on the underlying abandonment issue. And so it was put before you under those auspices, should we abandon this alley? And a bunch of questions came up, et cetera. Since that meeting took place, we've clarified that actually that doesn't need to go before the planning commission, that can go straight to the city council. And the only thing the planning commission really needs to consider is whether or not the vacation of the alley would be consistent with the general plan, which is really the only issue here. And I do have concerns about basing any decision either at the planning commission or on the city council on plans that are submitted to what's going to be done with the alley afterwards because technically speaking, that's not before the, the commission right now. And that would give rise to, you know, potential sequel review, et cetera, that have to be done on the project. As it stands now, the only issue that will ultimately be before the city council is whether to vacate the alley and then what to do with it once it's vacated will have to come before a separate application, new project, new analysis, et cetera, that would probably come before the planning commission at that time. I, I just wanted to provide those points of clarification because a lot of the questions seem to address those issues.
I'll make a motion that we deny the alley abandonment, considering that we have some right away concerns from three utility services and there is some citizens that are still utilizing that alley for access to their property.
I second that motion.
You second that motion, Frank?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Planning commissioner, comments? Any comments, planning commissioner?
Yeah, I would like to hear some comments from Mr. Duncan.
He made a lot of comment last week from the audience.
Well, yeah.
And now he's making comment, it's from here.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I don't have anything.
First meeting, you know, we give him, it's given a break.
No comments.
Learn from the best. Learn from you.
Good.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Seven twenty.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.